I'm not clicking it.
Okay, well, you're popping it.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure that I can help it.
Well, I tried to.
All right, thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. We're gonna work through our agenda for next week and get any questions answered that we need to get answered. First off, tonight, we do have members of the public here to speak about an agenda item. I know Clint and Sally all signed in, so whoever needs to speak from Decatur, or sorry, Delano Park Conservancy can come on now, and you can come to the podium here.
Council members, what we want to talk to you about is Delano Park and the Conservancy, and we'll be brief. We won't take a lot of your time. We've had a lot of conversations in between. But we were having a meeting back in June trying to get caught up with everything, and we were looking at our P&Ls and our balance sheets, and after we got through with the meeting, I just started looking at where we stood and, you know, just tying the balance, I mean, the P&L back into the balance sheet. The trend that we were on, where we would end the year at, of 2021, at $135,000 on our balance sheet, with the way we were going with maintenance and a few other just miniscule expenses, they weren't much at all, but it's primarily maintenance that we spend about 60 grand a year taking care of Delano Park. And one of the primary objectives was with the conservancies is put the capital to the ground and work with the city and have the city help us with maintenance over the years. But the Delano Park Conservancy, the park, Parks and Rec does a great job of all they do, but there's even more that needs to be done with all the different assets that are in the park. And so we've been spending about 60 grand a year, and it's just churning our balance sheet, and it's just heading in the wrong direction. At the end of 2022, we would have been the same trend that we were on, we would have been at like 80,000. So literally by the end of 2023, we would be just basically in solvent. And Barbara Kelly, who everybody in this room knows, and Sally Smart, who everybody knows, and Nell Standres, we always called them the big three, and all the work that they've done in that park, and they've done it for 22, 23 years that we've been going on, and nothing has slowed down. They continue to do it on a regular basis, and it's just flat out amazing. So I sat there and I thought to myself, you know, this is just, I'm not doing my producer responsibility as a board member to not, to make sure that we don't have something that we can sustain that we've worked on for so long and put so many wonderful assets in the ground, and there's more to come. There's a lot more that Barbara's working on to this day. So what we wanted to do is we wanted to get with the city and see if you guys would take half of our maintenance costs, roughly $25,000 on an annual basis, and help us get through, you know, everybody's been working with this COVID situation. We've done three fundraisers in the past where we've netted over $250,000 that Barbara's taken and Sally's taken, and they've leveraged it to get these fantastic grants that put, again, these assets in the ground. It's not something we can do tomorrow because, you know, with COVID and Delta and everything else like that, the Calhoun Foundation just, they've been whipsawed back and forth on trying to do a fundraiser. They just pulled one off at the Cooks Museum the other day, but, you know, it's been start and go. Alabama Center for the Arts, I'm chairman of that foundation, we've been doing the same thing. We're dying to do a fundraiser, but we want to wait, and we're looking at doing one in the first quarter. Delano Park Conservancy wants to do the exact same thing. We want to get one done, but we're not gonna be able to get one done probably first or second quarter of next year. So a long way of saying, we need to, we need this $25,000 to help plug the gap, work while we get ourselves together and get more capital on our balance sheet, and then at the same time, we've been working hard to, everybody knows the board is the most key thing to any kind of entity that you're on, and we've been working to take, you know, people that have retired, like Lynn and other people, Wally's on our board still, but a lot of people have kind of walked off, and now we've been bringing other people in, and we've brought Sherri Paylor in, we've brought Kristen Probst in, they both hit the ground running, we've brought Ron Stokes in, can't think of his name right now, he's done all our P&Ls for years, working with Lisa over at the Chamber, he's been doing it for so long, Ron's worked up, he's already volunteered to help us when it comes to our P&Ls and moving forward. And then we're getting young people in. Obviously, you gotta get more young people on these boards, and we all know that we're starting to age out a little bit, as I look at Billy, we're about the same age. Anyway, Billy's a little older. Anyway, we're.
That's a good way to get his support.
Talk about his age. Anyway, we, we think it's a small ask, we, we're using Jesus, he's at $25 an hour, we're picking up on the, you know, the Belt Line and other places at that same rate. You got the best volunteer in the city of Decatur who's in that park every other day, she's a perfectionist, she takes care of everything, she works with Jesus, little lumber company gives us mulch on an annual basis. We get about 20,000 in revenue from people just making donations, but our burn rate's too high with that 60,000 in maintenance. And so I'm here to ask you to consider spending $25,000 a year with Delano Park Conservancy, and we're gonna, we're gonna put the money towards maintenance. Sally wanted to follow up.
I did. Very, very briefly. My name is Sally Smart. I've been president of the Delano Park Conservancy for over 20 years. We started out as just a little bitty friends group, and I think what I want to say is certainly not anything about money, although money is so important, and that's the way we've been able to do what we've been able to do. But what has motivated all of us from the very beginning is the support, the unbelievable support we've gotten from the community, from all walks of life, and that's, and I was just thinking about, well, I wasn't thinking too much, to tell you the truth, because I didn't know I was gonna speak tonight, but right now, what I'd like to say briefly is, why are parks important? We all talk about it, it costs a lot of money, everything does, but why are parks important to a community? And, and everything that I've read, and Barbara has just taught me so much, since and I've just, it just keeps coming for 20 years, learn this, what about this? And the cities that are successful in revitalizing downtowns pay attention to downtown, and Delano Park is a, in the very center of our community, and it is for all walks of life. And when, we had an event last weekend, these new people Clint mentioned, and you, just all walks of life, all kinds of people, all in that space together, enjoying a free event. Everybody loves beauty, and everybody, just, it was just a great feeling. So we just, we're going to continue, we, we work really hard, our group, to, we're kind of goal oriented, and we set out to do something, and we try to do it, and we work really hard to make Delano Park the very best it can be for Decatur. And the word that I want to leave you with to me, and I think of as I look at all of you all, well, I don't know a lot of you all, but this council in particular is the word "future." Several years ago, Clint was nice enough to do an article for us, we were wondering, what are we gonna do, planning for the future? We didn't know how we were gonna get, keep on sustaining what we're doing right now, but it's just so important. But when I look at you all and pick up the Daily Every Day and Sunday's paper, there's just always something exciting and new, and I feel like Decatur's right at a point where the future is just, there's everybody's focus, and it's positive, and we just appreciate all the support that we've gotten, and we, we want to make Delano Park even more valuable to Decatur's future. Thank you.
Thanks, Clint and Sally. We do have that agenda item on the agenda we'll discuss tonight and potentially go on this week. All right, first on the agenda, we have approval of minutes, October 25th, 2021, 5:00 PM work session, November 1st, 2021, 5:30 PM work session, City Council Regular Meeting, November 1st, 2021, 6:00 PM. Any questions? All right, next is approve monthly bills, approve October 2021 monthly bills. Any questions? All right, next is Resolution Number 21358, Decatur Commons Project Aquadome Replacement, Additional Recreation on Redevelopment Facilities. Herman, you want to walk us through that?
Briefly, what this does, it just begins the process to evaluate location for the replacement of the aquadome. This just authorizes the mayor to go ahead and acquire any additional properties if it becomes necessary, and then bring it back to the council for council approval.
And we do have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday. For a public discussion of that potential site.
Herman, would you explain that one more time? Because, I mean, I, I don't understand with that, the Decatur Commons here, but you're saying we're evaluating properties. Are we evaluating that particular property, or are we evaluating multiple properties? What are we doing?
We evaluate multiple properties from Finley back to Mofen Street, bounded by the railroad on one side. It's, it's the area from Mofen Street back to Finley. We already own some of it, as you know, the ADM property.
Actually, I guess my question is, we're evaluating it, so are we saying that this is where we're going, or?
No, we're saying that that is authorizing the mayor to see what properties are available and to see what the value they're being asked for, and then bring it back to the city council.
Okay, so we are going to evaluate other properties outside of that particular area as well, correct?
That's up to the council to decide. Yes, I hope so. We're evaluating anywhere in the city, but yes. See, we already own, as you know, we already owned ADM property, ADM property, and this is, this is just a part of moving forward to evaluate all the options that we have.
And?
And properties are moving pretty quickly, so we, we want to make sure that we, if that's where we go, we want to make sure that we lock them in.
I would say, I mean, just, I think it's sort of obvious by the name of the resolution, if this were to pass, you are looking at that.
Yes.
Particular site to move forward with this project.
I guess that's, that's my question is that, I mean, we're not, we're discussing having public comment and discussion about this on Wednesday, but we've not had any public discussion about this. How did we get to this point? And that's what's of concern to me.
Yeah.
How did we arrive to this point? Because basically, this is saying, regardless of how we're spelling it out, this is saying that this is where we're focusing on right now. And I guess my concern is that we've not had any public discussion, yet we're at a point where we're actually, in my mind, we're selecting a property here.
If it were to pass.
If it, of course, but as far as that goes, Jacob, we could have 1,000 different properties on this resolution, and we could say that we're looking at each of those 1,000 pieces of property.
Yeah, I think if it passes, it gives us the direction of where we're going, and if it doesn't, we do need to reevaluate where we're going. But we, as far as the public input, I would say tonight, tonight's been, just like any other agenda item, people can come speak tonight, we're giving additional time for public input on Wednesday, and then there will be additional time for public input on Monday, just like any other agenda item would be. And this potential site has been, you know, known, we talked about it a little bit at the meeting, and I've had, I had calls before the Tuesday meeting a few weeks ago, when the kind of website and PDF were out there for people to view, people that didn't want it in that site and people that did want it in that site. So that general site has also been reported on in the daily, so it's not kind of, I don't think anybody is having this sprung on them tonight as something that's brand new.
But because it's been reported on in the daily, we've not, as a council, had public discussion about this.
Yeah.
And it appears that we're moving in that direction, and we've gone to the point where we've got it on our agenda, and it's an agenda item. So at that particular point, I guess my question, and I guess we're just kind of going in circles, but my question is, how did we get to the point without public discussion to even have it on the agenda? And that's, that's where I am with this, because, you know, if we had had open public discussion as a council, and we had arrived at a decision that we were looking at a specific piece of property, then it'd be one thing, but we haven't.
Yeah.
So apparently, there's been some discussion, just not open in public.
I would say tonight, and we did have some public discussion about it, Ms. Benson, who, she called me, and we talked about, she came to the meeting and talked about it the other night. Now, that's not what that was about, but tonight is a public discussion about it, if we want to continue to talk about it. Wednesday will be an open public discussion about it, where anybody can come share their thoughts and influence our decision on where it would go, and then Monday night also could have potential influence on that as well with public discussion.
But we're not running on the agenda, it's a car before the horse.
Yeah. Herman, anything to add?
Well, Mr. Jackson's correct. If that resolution passes, then that's the focus point, yeah.
And with it already being on the agenda, that's putting a car before the horse, because we have not had public discussion, Herman, and it's already, I mean, we're looking at it here, it's in writing.
Well, we're trying, I understand what you're saying. We're looking for clarification. If this is the location, we need to know that, if it's not, we need to know that, too. I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying it, because properties are moving around, I mean, no, there's, it's a seller's market right now, so that's the other thing, we just need some clarity, and we need to move forward, and this is one way to move it forward.
I would, I would agree with you totally. If we had five properties on here, I would agree with you totally. But we got one, and it's, apparently, there's consensus we're moving in that, in that direction. And so that's, that's what's concerning to me, is that we're at this point where we're voting on something that has not publicly been discussed, and even though it's been in the newspaper, even though a lady got up at the 3M meeting and asked for us to have public discussion, that's not truly public discussion, and so that's, that's where I'm at. We can beat this to death.
I understand, but yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, next is Resolution Number 21359, approve expenditure in the amount of $18,000 to Pugh Wright McAnally for engineering and design and construction, engineering, inspection of the Three Flume Slide Hill Tunnel project. Stephanie.
Council, council president, mayor, this is a request for approval for funds of the amount of $18,000 to contract Pugh Wright McAnally for the engineering and design to reinforce the lower hill at the Three Flume Slide. This request would be funded by the Point Mallard account, and it would be a capital improvement expense.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. Next is Resolution Number 21360, authorize the mayor to execute the North Alabama Drug Task Force MOU.
In a previous meeting, y'all adopted statewide task force agreement. This is the North Alabama county, some of counties and municipalities, and that's what this does, it just approves the MOU for. That's what this does. It just approves the MOU for the North Alabama cities and county.
All right, any questions? Resolution number 21361, approve expenditure for traffic signal upgrade at Second Avenue and Molten Street. Chief.
Mayor caution, I think that one goes without saying. It's not a whole lot for me to say about that one. We're just trying to upgrade the signal there at Second and Molten Street to make it safer.
It's larger, I think.
Larger light, a caution light, coming toward it, warning light coming toward it, uh, just to make it a little bit more safer. Those people who ride up and down Molten Street kind of don't see the light there at Second. They look at the str- the light at First and they shoot through that intersection. It makes it very dangerous.
So we ultimately be more visible
Yes, sir.
to motorists.
Yes, sir. More visible, that's correct.
All right, any questions? How much is it gonna cost?
$27,500.
Thanks, chief.
You're welcome.
All right, next is, sorry, any other questions? Next is resolution number 21362, approve TTL proposal for the installation of pyesometers in preparation for cell number 16 project. Is that, am I even?
Pyesometers.
Okay.
Carl is back there shaking his head at you.
Wanda Tyler Landfill and Recycling. Um, we are in cell 15 and it looks like we may be, uh, building cell 16 by the first quarter of '23. So we're, I was talking to Kyle before, earlier, and, uh, yeah. We've, uh, we're filling it up kind of quickly. More, it should have lasted maybe about five years, but it's gonna be a little bit, uh, a little less than five. Um, so this is the first stage of getting ready for a new cell, is, is seeing what's in, how close we are to the water table, because right now, we're digging and using that soil for cover in 15. So, uh, TTL has presented a proposal, uh, in the amount, I'm sorry. In the amount of $20,875. And this is to, uh, install the five pyesometers that are needed and also have a geologist evaluate what's going on in the, at the water table in the ground in regards to the pressure.
Okay, any questions for Wanda?
And of course, it's to be paid out of the landfill enterprise fund.
All right, next is resolution number 21363, approve the purchase of Peterson 6710D track mounted horizontal grinder.
I am so excited to, to come before you to finally get a grinder. Uh, we, uh, Thompson has agreed to, um, uh, trade our current 2012 grinder for $203,000. We, uh, because we're going through omnia pricing, we saved another $40,000, which, uh, this grinder is a little bit over a million dollars. So, and this, uh, again, will be in the enterprise fund. Unfortunately, the delivery date's not until May of 2022, so. But, uh, we'll be okay.
And we're renting one now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, any questions? All right. Uh, resolution number 21364, authorize mayor to apply for ATRIP2 funding. Alan?
Yes, council mayor. Uh, this is just an application for ATRIP2. It will allow us to upgrade and install some new lighting along the causeway.
And bridge.
And bridge.
Okay, any questions? All right, next is resolution number 21365, accept Alabama tourism grant for Point Mallard Master Plan.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is $100,000 for updating Point Mallard Master Plan.
Okay, any questions? All right, next is resolution number 21366, authorize mayor to accept Alabama tourism grant for Point Mallard Duck Pond.
This one is for $45,000 for the upgrades to the duck pond.
Okay.
Well, there's a postscript to that that Alan's gonna share with you.
Yeah, um, these two grants, the first one for the master plan is a 20, a 2022 grant. The, um, the second one for the duck pond is a 21 grant. The state contacted us today and they are wanting, um, the mayor to get that signed and back to the 20, because they're trying to get that funding closed out for the 21. They need the mayor to go ahead and sign that agreement. It is a no-match grant. There's some additional funding, or there's some additional paperwork that will be required before they would complete the application. But I guess we're just, I'm asking if, you know, if we could get the mayor to go ahead and sign that and get that submitted to, to the state. And then we will get, once you approve it, we'll get the additional paperwork to complete the application. They need that app, they need that signed agreement so they can start the process and get that.
There's a resolution in place that says if you have a no-match grant, council adopted, it says that if you have a no-match grant, the mayor can go ahead and sign it without y'all's approval. But we would prefer, if it's okay, him to sign it and y'all next Monday just affirm that. But it's, it's a no-match grant and there's already a resolution in place that allows that.
Yes.
We normally don't do that because we want the council to endorse it. And we hope you will just do that tonight, to say it's okay for the mayor to sign it.
I mean, I'm certainly okay with that. It's a no-match and we have a resolution.
And again, there is additional paperwork that the state is not gonna move forward with the grant that we don't provide. So, and I won't, we will not do that until your approval next week.
That's, that's fine. Thanks, Alan.
Yeah, Senator Orr was instrumental in getting those two grants. And I just think if, if we could, just, just give him a word of thanks next time you talk to him.
Jason said he worked for him.
He did.
Thanks, Jason. All right, uh, next is resolution number 21367, budget amendments for increased insurance premiums.
Well, basically, the amount of the invoice for the insurance, we have to estimate. We use the agents to try to do that, the, the cost when we budget it. But because of, uh, there's three properties that are on the historic register and they, they are now gonna be, have to be insured separately because they're unique. So that increased the cost. But cyber security premiums also went up substantially. So that's what you see here, is a total of $48,000 additional dollars that are needed to pay for our insurance program for this year. And, uh, you see the breakdown, $21,000 plus for the landfill. Point Mallard's 14.5 and then general fund is 12.4, I mean, $12,400.
Okay, any questions? Next is resolution number 21368, FY22 budget amendment, funding of previously approved items and projects. Dawn?
Good evening. Dawn Rundaker, Finance Manager for the City of Decatur. Um, these amounts are, are, um, do not have any additional impact on the budget. They're only carryover from FY21. Uh, these are funds that have, um, council-approved budgets. So these amounts are representative of, um, things that have already been approved by council, but were not completed or received by September 30. Of course, we can't put them in the original budget because we don't know what those balances carry forward are gonna be until about the end of October. So, um, these are all our capital project balances that we know of, equipment in progress, larger purchases not received by September 30.
Okay, any questions? Next is resolution number 21369, approve city investment committee members.
Good evening, council. Uh, this is some housekeeping on updating our committee members that are in our investment policy. I think their only member that's currently serving now is the mayor. So this just kind of updates, uh, to represent the people in place now.
Okay, any questions? Next is resolution number 21370, approve budget amendment for Singing River Trail contribution.
Yes, I, I can't remember the year, but we recently, uh, I think it was a couple of years ago, contributed $5,000 for a study related to this. And this is an additional contribution to that project. I don't know if anyone has more details of?
Dr. Sims came a few weeks ago and talked to us about that project and what our, um, kind of neighboring communities are contributing. And, um, I think that Singing River Trail, John Covad, just like the C A, CEO, um, had approached some, some folks too about us being a part of that regional effort. So that's what it's about. Anything else to add?
No, I tried it. What, $25,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions? Thanks, Kyle. Uh, resolution number 21371, authorize the mayor to execute community service agreement friends at Delano Park. And, uh, we did talk earlier today that will be changed to, uh, Delano Park Conservancy, um, for next week's vote.
Yeah, so I made a note of that as well. Um, but Herman and I determined that I think it was best that we set this resolution up similar to our other appropriations. So with that comes the application process. The members were able to submit everything. Everything checked out accordingly, so it is good to go.
Okay.
From our end.
And the reasoning, of course, we heard, um, at the beginning of the
Correct, yes.
Okay, any questions? All right, uh, resolution number 21372, approve budget amendment for Big Ten Mayor's Association dues.
Yeah, so I guess I can kind of touch on what this is. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I was invited and able to attend with the mayor to travel to Montgomery and meet with Big Ten cities of Alabama. And essentially, what this group is, is kind of a combined effort between the 10 biggest cities in Alabama to discuss, um, issues from police enforcement to legislation and things of that nature. And so all the CFOs were there as well. And it was really good for me to be able to, A, meet them and then kind of go over best business practices and whatnot. So essentially, what this does is it's a, it's a group of the Big Ten. Um, they, if you combine the populations of the 10 biggest cities, it's 3.4 million of 4.6 million Alabamians. So if you think about it, it's pretty influential in a lot of ways when we meet. This budget amendment is essentially, uh, our dues. The way the dues are set up, it's 50 cents per person and population. Um, and so it's kind of staggered between, obviously Huntsville and Birmingham would pay more than us based on population. Uh, that's essentially what, what they do. I think they meet quarterly mayor, is that correct? And they will
Or as needed.
Or as needed.
What's that total?
$29,000, I rounded up.
We've, we've frequently had calls in addition to, to meetings.
And I think Chief Allen, he went to a Big Ten Mayor's event as well. It's a different topic and you can bring
Correct.
director that needs to be involved. All right, any questions? All right, resolution number 21373, approve purchase of diagnostic scan tool from Snap-on not to exceed $21,500.
Yeah, this was the sole source that was approved last one. This essentially is now the budget request.
Okay.
Let's go, go through the IT department.
Correct. IT, it's going through the IT department to ensure that the network abilities are good to go from that end.
There's a, a, some type of application that goes along with the, okay.
Correct.
All right, any questions? Okay, next is resolution number 21374, award bid number 22004 to Lynn Leighton Ford for a truck for the police department.
We bid this out for the police department. We got one response from Lynn Leighton and it was in the amount of, um, a net amount of $25,871. We traded in a 10-year-old truck against it. We got $10,500 for it, so.
All right, any questions? All right, next is resolution number 21375, award bid number 22003 for suppressors for the police department.
Yes, sir. We got the one, almost 10 responses on this. And the lowest bidder was Botac Inc. At $10,431 and no sense.
Okay, any questions? Next is resolution number 21376, award bid number 22001 for janitorial services to diversified maintenance.
Yes, sir. This is for all the, uh, city-owned buildings, the janitorial service and supplies. We got three responses and diversified maintenance was the lowest at $125,184.36.
Okay, any questions? Next is resolution number 21377, approve intersection design agreement with Pugh Wright Civil Engineers. Orr?
Yes, mayor, council. Uh, this is to employ Pugh Wright McAnally to do a conceptual design at Highway 67 and Country Club Road for an intersection or signal design and do some preliminary approvals through ALDOT in case we have a, a development on that South Side 67. And, and I guess there may be one being talked about, and so that's prompted us to look at this.
Okay, and that would give us the cost?
It should give us a, a, a rough estimate, yes, but also, I guess the bigger thing would be getting some preapprovals through ALDOT.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Thanks, Carl. Resolution number 21378, approve budget amendment for increased cost of city janitorial services.
Yeah, as Charles mentioned, the, uh, bid came in for the janitorial service. Um, it was $11,000 more than what was originally budgeted, so this will get us up to match the bid amount.
Okay, any questions? All right, next, boards and committees, appoint Jacob Woods to the Historical Preservation Commission Board, term expiring March 19th, 2022. And I think that's a replacement for John Godwin. And I'd like to have an architect on the historical preservation. Any questions? All right, uh, we will have a special call to work session at 5 o'clock on Wednesday this week. Um, and then council meeting at 10:00 AM on November 15th. Anything else from directors? Carl?
All right, yes, mayor, council. Uh, probably two years ago, I, I got pulled into looking at Kerry Matthews, uh, with the floor settling. Just to give you some brief history, we did some, some little bit of testing on two spots in the gym floor. I guess employed an architect to get with DYS and myself to start working on some architectural plans. Uh, and, and based on our findings from earlier on, the structural engineer that, that the architect employed wasn't enough information for them to make a recommendation how to support the floor. So recently, we got, uh, building construction to tear out half the gym floor and, and Mid-South, did some additional soil testing, uh, and we got those reports back. And based on those reports, um, about the top 15 inches or so is, is decent clay that was put in, probably when the building was built. There's about another 15 to 18 inches that was probably some natural soils that not quite as good. And then from there down to about seven feet, the soil's just extremely wet, soft clay that, that, you know, I, I'm assuming that it's just water's getting in there and, and that type of clay likes to hold on to it. If there's any technical questions about any of this, I do have Ryan Stroop in the crowd to, to help answer any real geotechnical, technical terms if, if y'all have that. Uh, but based off of that information, the structural engineer came back with a, a, an option to try to support the floor using helical piers. Um, it would require some substantial undercut within the building, um, and then backfill and then his piers, which will drive the cost up considerably. Uh, I think there was some cautioning in doing some of this undercut. You could deserve some of the existing foundation of the outside walls, which don't appear to have moved, which is very surprising to me and other professionals that have looked at this. Um, and so they, they're not, and they can't guarantee that this won't, this failure won't happen again at some point in time. Now, what that point in time is, I don't think anybody could say, but most likely, it would happen again. So based on the architect, the structural and the geotechnical, uh, they were estimating the cost of this to get upwards of two and a half million plus to do the re- renovations. Uh, they cautioned with that cost and no guarantees that, that that's a lot of money to spend for, for something they can't say will last any amount of time. So I'm here looking at, I guess for the city council, my direction right now is I can take what we have, I can go to bid with it, and I can come back with a actual cost versus just estimating. Get that on the council for y'all to approve, or y'all can tell me, hey, we want to go a different direction and not spend the time to go through that bid process. That's the five-minute rendition of where we've gone in two years.
Okay. Uh, any questions for Carl?
So they can't guarantee it won't fail again?
Correct.
So they can't guarantee it won't fail again if we fix it?
That's absolutely correct.
And the cost is roughly $2.5 million, or something?
Two and a half, and it could be more depending on what they get into, just like any construction where you have bad soils. Once you start digging, you really don't know what you're going to find. I mean, we got a pretty good idea based on the testing that we did, and it's not good, so.
So we're talking dig out seven feet, backfill it, do the helic, helical piers?
And I believe that's what I got from the structural, is basically they had undercut about seven feet.
Yes.
Which, again, where I start drawing concerns, and, and I'm not the structural engineer, but I know enough to, to talk, that the footings for the outside walls are probably four to five feet deep. And if you start undercutting below those footers, there's a risk that you disturb those walls, um, which again throws additional cost into something we've already started. Not to say it would happen, it's just, it elevates that risk significantly.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, the only comment I'll make is I do think that it's, um, and I only know this because I read Mr. Jackson's comments in the paper, but it is critical that we have something in that area for, um, those kids. And the other reason I know that is because, uh, I work closely with the Neighborhood Christian Center, who has backyard Bible club at Kerry Matthews and has for a decade, and those kids can walk to that facility. So, uh, for tonight, I'll leave my comments at, at that. Um, but that I do think is critical in that general area for our whole community, the whole city, to have something viable for folks to, for where folks can go in that, in that area. So, um, any other comments? Thanks, Carl, and thanks for two years of, of work on that.
It's taken a.
Brandon's here and others.
Brandon here and Ron's here for, if they, you know, they can, they can chime in. Brandon's company did some work, and they, they know the difficulties it was just to.
Well, we still have a lot of work to go, because we've got to have a solution. Um, and the longer we sit there without making a decision and moving forward, there is no solution, so.
Y'all want me to try to move towards bidding it, or just sort of take the pause until I get some further direction?
So I got all your reports last Monday. This is just me personally, and, and I'm, I appreciate you being here to interpret what, what it said, because I'm not an engineer. I personally would need, and I hate to, I know we've been two years, but if, for me, I would like to be able to take what you said tonight and, and be able to give you feedback further down the road.
No problem.
If that's okay.
Yep.
Uh, but I'm open to whatever the rest of the council wants.
For the council, until I hear something different, then we're, we are where we are.
Yeah, but we owe you something by next week, because we can't just sit here and let the issue sit.
There you go.
Okay, any other comments? Thanks, Carl. All right, Rochelle is not here, I don't think, but she did send an email to us, uh, earlier this afternoon. Uh, we do have packets, uh, of the second round of the Environmental Services, um, job recruitment, uh, and have some results from that. I think she was asking that we give her, uh, look at those packets this week and give her some guidance, uh, by Monday on how to move forward with that role. So, um, those should be in your mailboxes upstairs. All right, anything else from any directors? Uh, anything from the mayor? Anything else from council? All right, thank you all. We're just next.